In vocation today is Pastor Christopher Neal with Douglas Memorial Methodist Episcopal Church. If you will please silence your cell phones and please stand.
Let us pray. Turn to God our Father, we come to thank you for allowing us to see the light of another day. And as we come to the awesome business of this great council, we ask that your leadership and presence be felt. Strengthen and direct these leaders who have sworn to protect and serve the citizens of Beaumont. Grant them wisdom, compassion, and love to deliberate and make decisions that give you glory. Father, we ask that all who speak today will speak with clarity, with passion, and respect, so that your work and your will might be done. Father, we turn it all over to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join us for our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Neal, and again welcome to Beaumont. I would like to read. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplating or pending litigation. In accordance with section 551 dot 071 of the government code, claim of Tamela Jones, claim of Sylvia Perry, claim of Brenda Antoine, claim of Jefferson County, Texas versus City of Beaumont, Texas, cause number B 198 dot 481. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Durio. Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Felschau.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one presentation today. From our city health director, please come forward. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, council, city manager, city attorney. This is our COVID weekly update. When I was last with you, the number of confirmed cases in Jefferson County was 193 cases and five deaths. This week, I'm happy to report that the number of cases for this week is 148 cases, but we still have five deaths. City of Beaumont, last time it was 140 cases and two deaths. This week is 67 cases and two deaths. So our cases are going down, and that's thanks to the number of people who continue to get vaccinated, people that continue to wear their mask and social distance. So we really appreciate that. But we need to increase the number of people getting vaccinated. And the reason I say that, last week in Jefferson County, the number of people who have received at least one dose was 59.8%. This week, 60.4%. So that's a very small number of people who have received their first dose. Another example, yesterday at the health department, we vaccinated 326 people. But 90% of that number was people coming in for their booster shot. So the people that's coming in for their booster, they're coming in. So we still need to increase the number of people getting their first doses. Hospital report last week, we had 39 patients in our hospitals. 82% of that was unvaccinated. We had nine on ventilators. 100% was unvaccinated. As of yesterday, we have 31 patients in our hospitals. 81% is unvaccinated. We have 10 on ventilators. 90% is unvaccinated. So we continue to see this same trend. The common theme is this, the ones that end up in our hospitals are unvaccinated. That's why we want to continue to encourage everyone who can medically and age eligible to get vaccinated. Our hospitalization rate has declined significantly. And our trauma service area is 5.3%, and in Jefferson County, it's 5%. So we're in a good place right now. And I just don't want us to get complacent with the numbers going down and we start letting our guards down. So let's stay vigilant. We get through this holiday season. We revisit come January, February, and the numbers are still going down. I'm gonna be optimistic and say we're on the other side of COVID. But we still need to encourage and continue to encourage everyone to get vaccinated. And that's our weekly update. Oh, let me end with this. Please, please, ma'am, sir, get your flu shot. It's flu season. Get your flu shot. Okay? Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, sir.
I heard earlier that the city was not giving flu shots. Has that changed?
No, sir. Because our insurance, you can go to any pharmacy, go to your local doctor, and it's covered by your insurance.
So your answer is that the city health department does not give flu shots?
We give flu shots through our immunization program to people uninsured or have Medicare. But for the city providing the flu shots, we're not doing that. And the reason for that is we've done it in the past, and the city had to purchase that flu vaccine, which is very costly. And so when we purchased the flu vaccine, we have to purchase enough for every city employee. So we looking at between 1,200, 1,300 city employees. And then, back then, we were only have maybe 200 to 300 city employees take advantage of it. So there was a lot of flu vaccine and money going to waste.
Councilmember Felschau.
Yes, we understand that there's a lot of unfounded information out there and a lot of concerns with the citizens for their sake. Could you just restate that there is no concern with mixing the flu shot with the COVID-19 vaccine?
Per CDC, that's correct. You can take the flu shot and the COVID vaccine at the same time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other comments? I would like to say with the holiday season coming up, as you stated, Mr. Coleman, we don't want to regress because we know the holidays are coming up. Families will be gathering, and so please, please, we're encouraging everyone to take your COVID-19 vaccine.
And we are administering the booster for Pfizer and Moderna at the health department Monday through Friday. So you can call 654-3647 to schedule your appointment. And we're asking everyone to bring their COVID vaccination record with them. So we do have the booster for Pfizer and Moderna.
What about for the children?
For kids ages 5 to 11, Thursday, FDA will submit their findings to CDC. Then CDC will have to review it. What they're saying, it could be as early as the beginning of November, that it would be approved for children ages 5 to 11. But once, you know, it's approved and received guidance, and then we will put out some information, letting everyone know that we will be administering the vaccine to that age group as well.
Okay. Thank you so very much, Mr. Coleman. We appreciate your great report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for any citizens that would wish to speak. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the right of the room. She will call your name. When you approach the podium, the green light will come on for you to begin speaking. And at the end of your three minutes, the red light would come on. We would ask that you respect the red light and end your statement.
Jeffrey Neesum, 214 Bayou Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Jeffrey Neesum, President of the Beaumont Professional Firefighters Local 399. Today I rise in opposition to consent agenda item C. It's the contract with AMR for 911 services. We feel that this agenda item may be in conflict with chapter 143 of the Texas Local Government Code. And we would like to request that this item be tabled until we can have some further discussion with the city and with our administration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion for the consent agenda. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Is the, uh, Mayor, the motion is to approve the consent agenda with item C being tabled. Is that the motion?
That's the motion on the floor.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, pulling item number C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Mayor, council. Item number one is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending chapter 28 of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, and in particular, the boundaries of the zoning districts, as indicated upon the zoning map of Beaumont, Texas, by changing the zoning of property presently zoned NC Neighborhood Commercial District, RS Residential Single Family Dwelling District for property located at 4475 Raven Street, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty. Kelly Hardy would like to rezone the property at 4475 Raven Street. At a joint public hearing held on October the 18th, the planning commission recommended 5 to 0. To approve the request, the administration recommends approval as well.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
It's been motion and second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Mayor and council, I'm going to read two ordinances. The first is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending chapter 28 of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, and in particular, the boundaries of the zoning districts, as indicated upon the zoning map of Beaumont, Texas, by changing the zoning of property presently zoned RS Residential Single Family Dwelling District GCMD2, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling 2 District, for a portion of the property located at 4050 Magnolia Avenue, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty. And the second ordinance you will vote on is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a convenience store and gas station as GCMD2, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling 2 District, for property located at 4050 Magnolia Avenue, City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. George Charlton is requesting the rezoning and the specific use permit. A joint public hearing held on October the 18th, the planning commission recommended 5 to 0 to approve the request for a zone with a specific use permit, again, to allow a convenience store and gas station with three conditions that are listed in your staff report. The administration recommends approval with the same three conditions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. You've heard the reading of item number two. There will be two motions for this item. I'm gonna call for the first motion.
I'd so move for approval with the conditions.
May I have a second?
Actually, the zone change should be the first motion.
The zone, it is. So I'm calling for the motion for the zone change.
I'd so move for approval.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carry for the zone change. May I have a motion for the specific use permit?
I'd so, so move for approval with the conditions.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, just wanted to make it clear for those that were not able to attend P&amp;Z that this gentleman was asked if he would, if he would have a gaming room in this facility, and he made it clear that he would not.
Thank you, Councilmember Felschau, for bringing that forward. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving this item, number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Item number three is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow an auto repair shop in NC Neighborhood Commercial District for property located at 1109 Harriet Street, in the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. An automotive shop is not permitted in a neighborhood commercial district, zoning district without a specific use permit. At a joint public hearing held on October the 18th, the planning commission recommended 4 to 1 to approve the request with two conditions. Number one, maximum of 20 vehicles to be on the property at any given time, including customer and employee parking. And number two, all auto repair must be conducted inside the shop. There's a protest against this request, or protest against the request was received for more than 20% of the land immediately adjoining the subject property. Therefore, a vote of three-fourths of the city council shall be required to approve the requested specific use permit.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make amendments to the item. Just the correct time. So I want to make an amendment to it.
Okay.
I would like to change it from 10, 20 vehicles to 10. Because that, uh, there's always a lot of cars there. They just cleaned it up. I mean, they're, and if we do 20, it'll end up being 30. Um, there's been a lot of complaints in the neighborhood. So just to keep that down, I think we should do 10 vehicles. And also, if whenever they go out of compliance, I would like the staff to bring it back to council so we could review their specific use permit.
Mayor, could I have a question for clarification?
Yes, Councilmember Felschau.
Yes, Councilmember Durio. Are you, does that 10 include employees or just customers only? Because the 20, I understood, included customers and employees.
I would think 10 total.
10 total.
I'd just like to say I have a concern going down to 10. I just, that's, I mean, even if you have five employees, six employees.
Well, it's only, it's six stalls over there, and the work has to be done inside. So that's, that's how many stalls there are to work on it. If there was a motion, Mayor, we don't have a second. Yeah, we've gone into discussion without a second.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. May I have a second?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner, a second. Now may we have discussion?
Would you entertain changing that to 15 instead of 10?
I think, I think we should leave it at 10 because, just because of what I said. In the past, they took a picture of it, and they finally cleaned it up. But in the past, I mean, they, they've had way over 20 cars there. And there's been a lot of complaints from the neighborhood.
Also, I would like to say that while I was a council member for Ward 4, there were several complaints, neighbors complaining. And with it only being six, six stalls to work on cars, if you have six stalls for automotive repair, that would leave you with four employees. But if you ever drove by there, there, there were, if there were not 30 cars on that little lot, it would be surprising to not see at least 30 cars on that lot.
It'd be bad when, when they're coming down Park Street, I guess headed north. When they get to Harriet, there's so many cars, they can't see if anything's coming. You know, so it's kind of dangerous right there on that corner, all those cars. It's kind of makes it a blind corner.
Councilmember Getz.
I think that the council members that live in their wards are probably most intimately familiar with the conditions of their wards, and some deference needs to be given to their viewpoint. And I support the proposed amendment.
Councilmember Turner.
This site plan shows roughly six spots for parking. Is that five or six, Christopher, clarification?
It's a little hard to read, but it appears to be six.
It looks like five to me, but it's a little confusing, yeah.
It looks like five.
Yeah.
But that's only parking. It doesn't include the work bays.
Yeah. And one thing that can be pretty bad for communities and also is like the, a lot of those junk, a lot of those vehicles just out there, you know, occupying space. And you really want to set a precedent that, you know, we got restrictions that you do work on the inside. And a lot of complaints was a lot of work was doing, going on on the outside of the bays as well. And like you said, safety wise and the whole magnitude, we got a few complaints from people in the community about, you know, cleaning up that area. So I think we're going in the right direction. But I kind of count five spots. So you actually have five additional spots for the parking lot, as well as six more spots in the bay. So, you know, total is about, what, 16 spots? So I think that should suffice.
16, but you're saying we're dropping it down to only 10 on the property?
Yeah, 10 on the property, but they have five, five parking spots on the property. So you literally gonna have five, possibly five cars just parked on the property without an actual parking spot. That's how it can kind of get out of control. And that's kind of how it was in the past when they had roughly 20 to 30 cars. And just moving forward, I want to ask like, as far as how do we monitor situations like this? Once we make a decision like this, how do we monitor to make sure we don't get back to what brought us to this situation now?
Right, so it would be two things. One is when a condition like this is approved as part of a specific use permit, we will put a reminder in our computer to go out periodically. It may be at the three month, the six month, just to ride by, and also based on complaints. So if we get complaints about it, we'll go back out. And whatever the number is, if it's in excess of that, we'll, we'll bring it back to council.
Councilmember Getz.
Okay, so now I'm a little bit confused because are we saying that we're gonna limit it to 10 cars total on the property? Or 10 plus the five spots?
It says 10 on the property.
10 on the property, and you got six bays. So you can do work on the inside on six of them.
So, so, so are you saying that there could be as many as 16 cars?
No, I didn't mean like that. What he was saying was because of the extra spaces, that might make them want to leave more cars there if we raise it up.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a maximum of 20 vehicles. And the motion before you is a maximum of 10, so.
Mayor.
Councilmember Felschau.
Chris, do we remember how many employees they have? Did they say four or five? Do you recall?
It seems like it was four.
Four? So if we have 10 and they have six bays, correct?
Yes.
So we're saying a total of 10 cars. Four employees, six cars in the bay. And that means that there is no room there for a citizen to drop their car off, waiting, anticipating a bay being freed up to get their car worked on. So we're actually placing a burden on our citizens where they're gonna have to make another trip back to get their car serviced. I think there has to be some room there. They've had 30 cars. That's a lot of cars. But to drop it down to 10 total, which is six citizens, you know, that's, that's gonna be challenging for the citizens. But I do hear Councilman Getz, and so I yield to the council member of Ward 4. But I am concerned that we're cutting it from one extreme to the other.
Well, the whole problem is, Councilmember Felschau, is that they had those 30 cars, but it was nowhere to even park them. They were parking on,
Yes.
on the street, on the grass. But legally, it's only space for five parking spaces and six cars to be worked on. So that would be in compliance with the 10 versus having 15 plus if someone came out to just drive up to see, can you work on my car today?
So do they have room for other car spaces, and they just haven't striped it, or they just?
No, there is no other room.
There is no other car spaces.
That's why, that's why the neighbors and the citizens in the area have complained year after year. So that has been the problem.
Well, 30 cars is excessive. I agree.
It's very excessive to be in a neighborhood.
Mayor.
So I'm gonna call, uh,
Mayor, I have one other comment.
Councilmember Getz.
Okay, so if there's six bays and five spaces, that's 11. Would you entertain going from 10 to 11 so that you could use all of the spaces and all of the bays at one time?
Okay.
Okay, so. And, okay, the amendment, you?
Just pull it and change it to 11. Pull the amendment and then change it to 11 vehicles.
Okay, the motion on the floor now is to amend the original motion from 10 to 11. And so may, may I have a motion?
Does that include the other condition? Does the motion include the other condition?
And the motion also include the other condition? Councilmember Durio.
Oh, the one that was on, all auto repair must be conducted inside the shop. And if they out of compliance, bring back to council for review. That's the condition. Yes.
Yes, it does. May I have a motion, please?
Mayor, we already have a motion by Councilmember Durio and a second by Councilmember Turner.
Okay.
Does the second accept the amendment to 11, 10, from 10 to 11?
And I second the motion to amend it to 11 with all existing conditions.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. Item number four, please.
Mayor and council, item number four is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance issuing an amended specific use permit to allow one driveway accessing the north cul-de-sac of West Lucas in a GCMD2, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling 2 District, 622 West Lucas Drive, City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Brian Dunagan is requesting the specific use permit. At a joint public hearing held on October the 18th, the planning commission recommended 4 to 1 to approve the request with three conditions that are listed in your staff report. Protest against this request was received from more than 20% of the land immediately adjoining the subject property. Therefore, a vote of three-fourths of the city council shall be required to approve the revised specific use permit.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to move to approve adding one more additional condition, and that is a six-foot privacy fence running parallel to the back of the building.
Okay, we have a motion with a condition on the floor. May I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Felschau has a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Felschau.
Could we specify the length of the fence as in, if you look at the site plan, running from where this new driveway will intersect with the entrance of Quincy's? I think it's Quincy's, isn't it?
Quincy's.
Quincy's, okay. From intersecting there and all the way back down to where the, the, I guess that would be the south corner of the property. Neal, is that what you were?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you were visioning? Okay. So if we could specify that. From the north end where this new driveway will intersect with the new entrance, all the way back down to the southeast corner of the parking lot.
Hang on. This, are you talking about this entrance in this other cul-de-sac back here?
Yes, from here down to here. So this, the fence will give these renters back here, these residents some privacy.
Correct.
I'm calling that the southeast corner down at the bottom.
I had one other question.
Okay, Councilmember Neal.
My understanding is this back cul-de-sac is not supposed to be used to access that property either, right?
That's correct.
So why wouldn't we run the fence all the way down to that?
Well, I think if the fence goes to the southeast property line, that would also block that.
Look at this one here.
The problem is we got about five different maps on these, and none of them are the same.
Exhibit C is the current.
Look at, look at C or B. All the way down here. So these residents will have some separation.
So, Mayor, clarification? So B doesn't exist? Uh, that's why I'm kind of confused too. So B doesn't exist, uh, that's why I'm kind of confused too. Does B exist, or?
So just to clarify, because it, it has been several iterations. Site plan A in your packet was from twenty-eleven. Site plan B was what was approved back in August of this year, which allowed that northern cu- uh, curb cut for Quincy's, but denied that southern curb cut that says new drive on exhibit B. And then what's at question before you now is exhibit C.
Which is the current?
The current proposal, yes, ma'am. Current request.
Mayor?
Councilmember Getz?
I'd like to get a little history on this because I remember when Lucas was straightened out and originally the old West Lucas, you can see where the street was on our map and how it was a, uh, more of a residential street than it is now. There's now a combination of residences and commercial dwellings. When, when we put in the new West Lucas, how did this property come about so that we did not require some sort of a screening in the back of that building to offset the aesthetics that the landowners on the old West Lucas would have to see? Because they'd come out their front door and now be greeted by the back of a metal building, a commercial metal building, uh, which is very unappealing. Uh, h- how did this happen?
So I, I don't know the exact history of the realignment of West Lucas. I just, from hearsay, kind of, and, and based on what's on the parcel maps, it does appear that West Lucas was re, uh, realigned in order to make it more of a ninety-degree intersection with Calder. And again, my estimation is this was kind of a leftover property that was between the new road and the existing, or, yeah, the existing West Lucas and then the new West Lucas. And so, again, as it was sold off, it is the intersection of two arterial streets, West Lucas and Calder. So it would make sense that it's a commercial zone of some sort. Uh, but again, this is G C M D two, which requires, you know, extra, extra review by the city council. And that's why this is before you today. But regarding the, the buffer and the fence is the, the buffer and the fencing requirements are outlined in the landscaping ordinance. So whenever a residential property abuts a commercial or an industrial property, you've got to have a buffer. And that can either be a thirty-foot planted and, or a ten-foot planted with an eight-foot wooden fence or wall. But there's an exception in the landscape ordinance that says, um, if, if the property is separated by a right-of-way, not even a street, but a right-of-way, then the buffer is not required. So because that street is there, um, the buffer, that's why the buffer was not required when this development went in.
That might be something we want to look at, uh, because, yeah, there's a street there, but that doesn't really provide much of a deterrent aesthetically when you walk out your front door and you see this commercial metal building right across, in the, in the back of it, at that, uh, which is where the garbage and everything is.
You know, we do require, um, hedges along parking lots, uh, for new developments. So it kind of screens a parking lot from the street. But again, I would say because of the history of this property and how it got developed, it's, it's really the exception and not, and not the rule. So I'm not surprised that the ordinance doesn't take it into account. But again, because it is G C M D two, it does give the council the ability to look at it and then apply a condition like this to that. So again, uh, the fence, of course, would be, would be possible.
So just to clarify on where this fence would actually go, would it be starting, uh, at the driveway that was put in, um, and then continuing south uh, along the building line, all the way to the end of the parking lot, or just to the end of the building line? Well, um, that's what I'm trying to clarify. Is it gonna start at the driveway?
Start at the driveway on the north.
Okay.
All the way down to the property line on the south.
Okay, so screen the parking lot as well, okay.
But it can only go, uh, as far as the drive-through, up to the drive-through for Quincy's?
Yeah, it would stop here.
Yeah, because it's gonna have to stop at the end of the building to allow for the drive-through. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. Mrs. City Manager, please take us into the discussion item, please.
Mayor and Council, we brought this up to you a few weeks ago. We have a discussion item to review and discuss the possible rebranding of the Beaumont Municipal Transit System. And Chris Boone, who's our Planning and Community Development Director, and also over Beaumont Municipal Transit, will, uh, will lead the presentation.
Good afternoon. This was discussed, I think briefly, in the, uh, the council retreat, uh, the week before last. And what we're proposing to discuss today is, um, in conjunction with several improvements of the transit system. As you're aware, we do have a new management company that is operating the system. And we do, we are in the process of new amenities, like bike racks for all of our fixed route buses. Uh, we are also working with our management company to implement a smartphone tracking app where you'll be able to track, uh, the real time where the buses are. So that gives riders a better idea of when the bus may pick them up, give them a better idea of the schedules, which bus to take where, and when they can expect to reach their destination. It also is helping us to schedule our S T S service, which is on-demand. Um, as mentioned, uh, the tr- the management company is conducting a, uh, an efficiency study currently. Uh, we don't have that, uh, study yet, uh, back, but we expect it here within the next sixty days. And we will bring that to council to discuss their recommendations for possible enhancements to the routes. But more importantly, um, we have received federal funding, uh, to secure eight new fixed buses, or the bigger buses, in our system, as well as eight new S T S buses. I will mention that the new fixed routes, route buses that are larger are actually gonna be a little bit smaller, a little bit shorter than our current fleet. But in conjunction with that, we are proposing, uh, to essentially rebrand, uh, refresh the image of the system. And, and so what we have, uh, what we are proposing is, is really a departure from, you know, what has been Beaumont Municipal Transit, to something a little, a little more, uh, fresh and hopefully appealing to riders. And that is, um, the zip system. And I guess for the purpose of discussion today, we really just want feedback in terms of, um, whether or not this concept is appealing. And then also, uh, we do have a few versions of, uh, possible paint colors. So this would be the first, uh, the silver or gray. And you can see, uh, the little marker on the I is green. Uh, this next version, the marker being blue. The next version we've got is the red. And the final version is the green. And I realize everyone would,
Go through it one more time, please, the four. If you're okay with zip, that's number one. Number two then would be if four more can, if you can come to agreement on what the color scheme should be. Because we have to order these buses and, well, they're on order, but before we get them in, we need to tell them pretty soon.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, so we need your buy-in. Otherwise, if not, we'll just leave the same color scheme that we have.
Councilmember Getz?
Does the efficiency study include, uh, study on unique riders? Because that's something I have asked for, for many years now. And when this company was, uh, asking that we consider hiring them, uh, I remember distinctly that they said that they could do that, that they would do that. But it's been some, it's been a minute. So, uh, where are we on that?
Again, we don't have the study yet. I, after the retreat, I did mention that to our manager again. And so he was gonna check with the group that's doing the efficiency study, just to reiterate that request. And that it's been something that we have been asking for and it's something that they did say they could do. So again, I don't have the study yet, but as soon as I do, you know, we'll certainly share it with council.
The funding for the bike racks and, uh, the, uh, improvements so that you can track the location of the buses, uh, with your smartphones, where's that funding coming from?
It's, um, basically F T A funding.
Okay, so that's not local taxpayer dollars?
No, sir, no, sir.
And is there any other options besides zip? I mean, what, is this something that this company is familiar with and they want to see used? Or is this something that we picked out of a catalog? How, how, how did this concept come about?
Well, we have an internal working group and we've been working with some of our communications, our marketing folks, and, uh, just, you know, trying to come up with something that's fresh. And as you recall, in the work session, we talked about different systems. Instead of being, you know, metro or transit, you know, they have the wave or the, it's just a variety of different kind of catchier names. And so this is just something that we, we kind of all agreed that, you know, it, it has a catchy name. Uh, you know, you take the zip across town, zip across towns. So it kind of has a noun and a verb and it's active. And, and so we just kind of came up to an agreement that this, this is, uh, this would be a good, a good option.
Okay.
Councilmember Turner?
Uh, I see we have eight of the bigger buses. It'll be eight of the smaller ones. Currently, how many big ones and smaller ones operate at one time? Is it kind of around this number?
So we have eighteen. The issue is you have maintenance and repairs ongoing. You may have accidents, so those can take them out of service. But in general, we'll have twelve large buses on the, on the road at any time.
So it'll basically be eight of our new, newer buses with additional, is it, what, four more of the older buses at the same time?
Yes, sir. And the idea is that generally F T A will give us an allocation every year. So moving forward, you know, starting this year, we'll be trying to get F T A funding to replace the four older. So hopefully the idea is that we'll have, we'll have a newer fleet across the fleet. But yes, there will be some older buses on the road for a little while.
And, and you say normally, what, the, the goal is in game is probably to replace maybe a bus a year? So we might be looking at maybe roughly four more years before we get all of them looking in unison?
Right, so there are requirements as to how long we keep them and how, how many miles they have to, you know, have on them before we can, you know, auction them off, um, and buy new ones. But we're in discussion with, uh, with our fleet manager in terms of coming up with a, um, a smoother acquisition schedule. So probably, you know, to your point, probably a couple of year, and that will keep, uh, keep the fleet current.
And one last question. I think, I think it's real important that you guys, I know we had a work session and we seen several options. And I kind of suggested that we actually did utilize marketing departments in the City of Beaumont. Y'all kind of worked together and come up with what y'all feel is best. So I think it's good that you guys did do that, to come up with it and the whole theory and the whole nine. But that was my main concern, that everything looked the same.
Uh, my question is, are any of the new buses hybrids?
So all the new buses will be compressed natural gas.
Good.
So they will be clean, clean fuel.
Thank you. Councilmember Felschah?
Go ahead.
What's the S T S? What's the smaller buses?
The special, yes, sir. The special, special transit service is the acronym, but it's the A D A service, yes, sir.
And the zip, it doesn't stand for anything. I was just writing some stuff down here, might be stealing, but like Beaumont Area Rapid Transit would be BART, which that's what they use in San Francisco.
Right.
It's just another name, but the, the initials actually stand for something.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Councilmember Felschah?
Yeah, just, uh, curious, you mentioned marketing, branding, uh, and they came up with the zip. Did they have any preference when it comes to color schemes? In keeping a consistency in Beaumont with our colors and, uh, just trying to tie in with what we have now? So when you see the colors, you think of Beaumont? Well, it's not really our, can you go? I didn't see, that's not,
There is no.
There is none. Our, really, our colors are green, blue, and probably white or black, whichever you choose. But was there any discussion about the consistency of our colors?
We did. We talked a little bit about that. Um, you know, part of the discussion was to keep it fresh, to keep it new. Um, and, you know, part of it is the transit system is, is separate from the city. We don't operate it day-to-day. So just to kind of keep it a little separate, um, that was discussed also.
Fair enough. And just curious, uh, you mentioned the buses will be smaller than what we have? Just what's the capacity of the new buses? Just curious.
It should be about the same in the fifty range. It's just a little bit shorter.
Smaller package?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember, uh, Getz?
Following what Councilmember Felschah said, I, I for one like the consistency of the colors, following the color scheme of the City of Beaumont. And I think there's a way we can freshen the bus look and still utilize the primary colors for the city. Uh, you, you know, right now you see basically a white bus and let's, well, let me back up. These buses, this, this will be the primary colors, but you can still wrap a bus. It wants, so, so the wrapping is separate. So we'll still see some buses that are wrapped, uh, that are promoting various things like the C V B or, uh, yeah, that, that sort of thing.
Yes.
So if an unwrapped bus, you, your basic scheme right now, what you see is a white with some blue and green accents on that. Uh, you, you know, why can't we have a, uh, primarily green or a blue bus with white accents or something? Just to kind of keep the same color schemes.
Yeah, and again, we might, you know, so taking the green one that's in front of you or one of the silver ones, we could, you know, we could ask them maybe, you know, to, even the, the marker above the I could be Beaumont blue or something to that effect. I'm sure they could come up with that.
Is this green? Because this green doesn't look like the Beaumont green.
Right, right.
So the green is off. I mean, I'm happy that we're getting eight new, I'm sorry, sixteen new buses, especially the special, special transit buses. And I don't want to get caught up on, on, on colors so much, but I would have to say I am not feeling zip. Um, and I almost think this is pretty much the consensus up here. I am, uh, I'm not feeling zip. So.
We have no problem with that. So you have two choices. You can just leave it B M T for Beaumont Municipal Transit, or we can schedule some off-site work session again, probably within the next week, because we need to do it timely. Do we have even a week?
Do we have a week?
The manufacturer's been on us, and I can, I can certainly ask.
Yeah, we could, we try to do something soon and we can put you on a room and y'all can talk about it for as long as you want.
Let's pick it today.
Let's pick, yeah. We, we don't have to do a workshop.
Yeah, I don't know about a workshop. Let's pick a color. When, um, Councilmember Getz?
You know, I understand that the bus system is not the city, but there is, with,
It, it is the city. It's just managed by an outside company. We own those buses. We're responsible for them. It's just for thirty-plus years, the city has contracted with a management company to operate it for us.
Fair enough.
Employees work for them, but it is our system.
Fair enough, and that makes what I'm about to say even more prudent. B M T has two connotations. Beaumont Municipal Transit, but it's also the abbreviation for Beaumont. You know, so to me, it's kind of logical that it says, that says B M T. Zip is, it, it's like Councilmember Durio was asking, does zip mean anything or stand anything? No, it's just a, yeah, you know, I understand it's new and different, but,
Zip through town.
Zip through town, but, um,
We're, we're happy with that. We can leave it B M T. We just know that staff, staff, you know, you get six, seven staff people together and,
And we're sorry, staff.
I applaud them because they worked really hard on this.
I know.
I wasn't in those meetings, but they worked really hard on it for months and months and months. months and months. So, and they're smart people in that room.
They are.
So however, they were, they had a lot of diverse opinions. So keeping it BMT, if that's the consensus of the council, we're really good with that. And now we just need to talk about colors.
One moment. Councilmember Felschall.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And I, I have a tendency with, you know, to agree with Councilman Gatz, but that's our generation. I think we, we think, and I, I feel my brother over here shaking his head. And, and we, we think a certain way. It has to be logical. And, and that's the way I think. And, and for me, the, the logical thing to do is to stay with our colors as they are. And BMT, I get that. But I would like to hear from the younger generation, because I, I got, because I am looking for something fresh and youthful and something to help rebrand the city and bring some excitement to our city. And so I know that sometimes the old way of thinking has got to make room. So Councilman Turner, what is your opinion of the comparison between something like zip as opposed to just BMT?
Me, me personally, I feel like things can't, needs to be freshened up and more exciting. You made a good statement at our workshop that we need to do something more freshened up and exciting. I think the bus looks very good and clean, but I do think just because we implement the blue and green, which I'm fine with, which, which is our city colors, it doesn't help, it doesn't hurt to do a little bit more accents. One thing about staff I'm big on is they do marketing. So they're all paid to do marketing. If it's a reason, they come up with something marketing related, I try not to touch it too much. But at this, at this point, I'm, I'm totally open, even if BMT is designed kind of unique like zip, so it's not so simple. You know, just not the standard regular BMT, let's at least kind of keep it similar to design they already have. So I just don't want to, with staff working that hard, you know, just kind of, oh, e- e- even BMT zipped, I think that's simple. Like, you know, now I think it's a win-win. When you have staff work on something for months and zip, I get zip around town, I think it's pretty cool. But I also understand the simple fact of Beaumont, we, we do need to brand our city. So I think collaborating them to some type of extent, I think that would be fair to staff and also fair to something new.
So could, could they work on something with the colors of the city and come back with Beaumont zip?
Beaumont zip.
And present it to us next week?
Do you think we have a week?
I will.
Okay. I yield to the council. If y'all want to make a call today, let's be decisive.
If we just.
Your tie really looks good for the.
Yeah, you have the tie on. Right.
That's why I wore this one as well.
Hey, I, I got mine too.
Councilmember Gatz?
So what I'm thinking as far as colors and I, I remember my Councilmember Neil at one time said, I didn't get up here to pick colors, but so, so, but here's what, here, here we are. So if the green in this bus that's before us was the Beaumont green and that white was the Beaumont blue and your, your logo was in white, I think that might be attractive.
That color.
That, yeah, yeah, your, your color green, your color blue, like on your tie, Chris, and, and not so much white like that. I mean, that just kind of.
Go, yeah, go to the one that, that has the green.
But have the green, the gray, and then the.
We could do the royal blue. We could do the gray, white, the royal blue. Royal, I mean, the blue and then the green.
Back in there.
And do Beaumont zip.
I think if we went back to him and said, you know, use these Beaumont colors and...
With the gray and the white.
Mayor, there are the colors right there on the official city flag.
Right. The royal blue.
Or the hunter green.
And, and the green.
But it don't have gray. Is that gray? The background's gray?
Some of our councilmembers are colorblind.
Gray is not a color for the city logo.
Okay.
I think we thoroughly confused it.
Yeah, I think, I think we, see if we have a week, we could come back and show the council the colors on a new scheme and get them to sign off on it.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Durya.
Do we have enough of a consensus to just make that decision now? Or should, do we, do we need to wait? I mean, we know we want the colors we want. We know we wanted to say Beaumont zip. I mean.
Wait, y'all want Beaumont zip or just, just BMT?
Oh, BMT. BMT, BMT zip.
Yeah.
Okay.
BMT zip.
With a fresh look.
With the blue and green.
Well, y'all can leave it to staff.
I think that's what I tried to say.
Let staff do it.
Yeah, I don't think we need.
Well, city manager asked the question, so.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I bet.
That's okay. Councilmember Turner, go ahead.
Me personally, I'm fine with the color change and adding what we said. I don't think you guys need to bring it back to us in a week, but I'm just speaking for myself. I think that's what staff is here for, to do this. And now, now we kind of discussed the colors and what we wanted to say. I think it's fair to staff to keep zip because they've been working on it and add BMT to it to appease the council. And I think we have a consensus.
We're good if you just want BMT. And if you want BMT zip, we, if that's what I'm hearing from four more.
In the same type of lettering that the zip is in, just lower the zip, put BMT over it.
Zip in it.
And, yeah.
Zip it.
We're done.
Incorporate the city's official colors.
I didn't say that. I said that color.
That, that blue probably looks better. Most of us can agree. But that's the official blue behind you.
CBB.
But most citizens don't know that, right?
I just said what his third history says.
We, we can go towards more of the Navy.
Please not the flag color.
Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we got that settled. So now's the time, yes, so now's the time for, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Samuel. Please!
He wants his picture on the bus. I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. Now it's the time for any citizen that would like to speak. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk. You have three minutes to speak. The green light will come on at the beginning. And at the end of your three minutes, the red light will come on.
Brian Nefo, thirty-four fifteen Laurel, Beaumont, Texas.
Good after, good afternoon, council, Mayor. I've got some alternative, you know, color schemes for, I'm just checking. So Halloween's approaching us, and this upcoming Sunday, I wanted to announce that our first annual Makenz Meet Trunk or Treat and movie Night in the Park will be at, hosted at Rogers Park. We'll be starting for the little trick or treaters at six-thirty. That'll go on for about an hour, hour and a half until it gets dark. And we'll be starting the movie, I think it's called Hotel Transylvania. It's a family-friendly, you know, kids movie. And so this will be directly after the, the police trunk or treat, which is from one to four. I wanted to announce that if no one knew about that. And ask Mr. Singletary if he would hold over one or two of the officers. That way everybody could feel safe and the policeman will be there. And so I just wanted to invite everyone to come on out, bring your kids, bring your neighbors, join in, you know, line up with us and enjoy the trunk or treat and festivities. Thanks.
Thank you.
Steve Hoffman, seventy-four-five Belarney Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, I rise to speak because I want to expand and enhance Mr. Kyle Hayes' comments from the last meeting. I appreciate the comment about the, the Oktoberfest. It did start by talking to people over the years after the fair moved to the spring, that they were saying that they missed the fall, that they really wanted a fall festival. They understood why it left because of the hurricane and stuff like that. But we, we're missing a fall festival. So I went to Councilman Gatz to ask him, what can we do to have a fall festival in, in the city to kind of meet this demand? It's a pent-up demand. And so he immediately said Oktoberfest. And I said, perfect. And so from then on, we kind of formed a team. Mike was doing the lead in the heavy lifting. He worked with the council, found out, because I didn't know what you could or couldn't do, what you had or had not considered in the past. So I didn't, I didn't have any suggestions. I mean, I had a history, my work career, I was president and chairman of a international user group that was, we had international conventions. We had them in the United States, South Africa, South America, Hong Kong, Australia. And so I, I knew how to put an event on, and I knew that the event group, event team here was, was good. So what I wanted to do is I knew that the first, first one of the Oktoberfest had to be successful, or it's going to die. So I, I got busy. Mike did his thing, getting things moving, and he was the ideal man for the whole thing. And then so I went and found all the twenty-something bars, got the posters from the event group, and made sure that every, every bar that had of age drinkers go there. Because the Craft Beer Festival was highly successful. Craft Beer at the Oktoberfest was going to be successful. And so I, I needed to get the word out. So we had the people come to show that the first time we had it was successful, and therefore the city would want to go ahead and spend the money to keep it going. And this last Oktoberfest reminded me of the first one. It was highly successful. I mean, we saw neighbors from the neighborhood, all, all our town. Some people came out of town. Everybody seemed half, half the people there had dogs. Maybe at least I brought my dog, but I mean, it was a good event, and I think it's a good time for neighbors to get together. Next, the next door thing that I got active in was that they want neighbors to talk to neighbors and, and visit and be friendly. The old neighborhoods, the nineteen-fifties, nineteen-forties version neighborhood. And that was, that was working. That was working at that location. So I, I want to be sure that Mike gets his recognition for how, the heavy lifting he did. Yeah, I, I, I basically, I detailed the car, basically. I made sure that the things happened. I knew, I knew what critical, critical things we needed to do and, and how important it was to keep the thing going so it would be successful. So I just kind of stayed in the background and made sure that things happened. I went, I remember I spoke to council about when the alcohol ordinance and when the parks came up. I wanted to be sure you understood that Austin and New Orleans both made it work so that y'all wouldn't say, we can't do that. It's not going to work. So that was, that was my understanding. I, I wanted to see the park. I knew the people wanted it. So I was going to help y'all along to be sure that nothing happened to trip it up on the way.
Well, Mr. Hoffman.
So I mean, I, I, I don't want all the, I don't want to say that Steve Hoffman did it. Yeah, I, I participated. I did part of it. And I know Mike's controversial at times, but he comes up with ideas. I mean, and, and he knows how to do the research. So putting this together worked, worked well for us. And I think it was a great event.
Well, thank you. And it's the prime example of citizens getting involved, making suggestions, and seeing it come to fruition. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Becky Stetman, ten-seventy-five Thomas Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. I am here representing the Beaumont Council of Garden Clubs, and we'd like to invite you to our Ghost Goblins in Gardens that will be taking place this Saturday on the grounds of the Botanic Gardens. We've also partnered with the Terrell Park Stables and with Cattail Marsh. So activities will be going on all day long for families, children, just anybody who wants to come out and enjoy what Terrell Park has to offer. I'd also like to thank the city on behalf of the council for the help with the landscape and maintenance on the property of the Beaumont Botanical Gardens and for the hog fence that you installed. It seems that that fence is working. We have four hundred pumpkins set out on the grounds right now, and they have not been touched. So we think we're successful there. Since many, many storms, we have had lots of damage to the grounds and to the buildings. Well, the buildings are up and being rented. The grounds are in tip-top condition for this time of year, and we look forward to making further improvements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas Hunter, ninety-one fifty-five Map Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Afternoon, Mayor, council staff. And as for the youth opinion and zip ain't it? We appreciate staff working hard to come up with marketing ideas and concepts, but we don't need to change just because we can, right? The, the BMT logo that's on the buses, it travels throughout the buses. I think the more important question is the one that, that Councilman Gatz keeps asking is how many people actually use the buses, right? Where, where's the, the, the management company's information on that? I mean, I've seen him ask for it for several months. And to me, that should be the bigger question. What do we do with these federally, federal funds that are going to keep continuing to come flow down the pipe to make our community a better place? And really, this is the time that we need to be looking at truly generational changing ideas when it comes to transit, right? It, not just to paint a new bus, but to get a fleet of electric cars that runs the city for the people who need to actually get transportation. I mean, to me, that makes more sense, but that's just my idea. But I am here to, again, invite everyone out to our trunk or treat, five-thirty, seven, five-thirty Halloween after his. We're going to be putting up a map for all the different trunk or treats throughout the city, because your kids can get so much candy over the weekend. They're going to be throughout our neighborhood at North Point. We're doing one in Amelia. There's Pearlstein Park, obviously Rogers Park, the.
Police.
Yes, there you go, police. So there's all, going to be all over the place. You can, we'll be posting information on that Friday afternoon on our social media page at BMT Can Inc. So BMT Can Inc. We like BMT and our own stuff. So we figure it's probably going to be good for the buses, too.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, so now it's time for a council member comment. And I will start with you, Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. Only comment I have, I'd like for the council here over the next near future to consider the possibilities of us passing some type of ordinance or resolution, whatever's necessary to make this happen. But to give council the ability to remote in to meetings, if a council member's out. I was also thinking that it would come in handy for things like planning and zoning as well, where we're having issues getting a quorum at times. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Samuel?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Felschall?
No, thank you, Mayor. No comment.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, to the citizens of Beaumont, y'all be careful. I know we approaching Halloween and, you know, all areas are good areas to go in. So I appreciate everyone stepping up and doing some of the things you're doing for Halloween to make it safe for our kids. Just be mindful, there'll be a lot of people moving around, and we need to actually watch our kids more than anything at times like this. So I just want to stress to everybody to, yeah, it's a time to have a good time, but all at the same time, let's be careful and strenuous and literally watch our children for the Halloween weekend. Thank you.
Councilmember Gatz?
This is a question for the manager, following on Councilmember Neil's comment. Would we actually need to have an ordinance to be able to allow council to take advantage of today's technology to allow council members that might not be able to be physically present at a meeting to be able to participate by Zoom or some other method? Or is that just something that we can do internally? Or do we need to have a workshop to discuss it?
If I might answer that, that'd be a discussion for a different day. And Councilmember Neil has asked that discussion be had on a different day. It's, it's a legal question that we need to look into.
Okay, all right. As far as my comments unrelated to that, I'd like to say that Oktoberfest was a team concept. And although it may have been my idea, it kind of came out in the person that did the heavy lifting, wasn't me. It was Lenny Cabarello and that department. Because while I may have had the idea, Lenny and now Emily picking up the baton after him is, are the people that really make it happen. We had to change the ordinance to allow alcohol to be sold and consumed in Rogers Park. So that was one of the things that we had to do. But it all kind of started out of our conversation, Steve, if you recall, because we were having these concerts in the park in July in, in the West End, in Rogers Park, where nobody was coming. And so we, we talked about how we, could we do something in the fall to recapture the flavor that the fair used to have there? And that's, that's kind of where it started. And, you know, bringing that idea to the city manager and then him delegating it to Lenny to actually make it happen. That, that's where it all started. And by the way, I love your shirt. So thank you for your comments, Mr. Hoffman. That's all I have.
Councilmember Durya?
First, one more trunk or treat. We're having one at Harvest for Lost Souls Church on Saturday from four to six-thirty, thirty-three, ninety-five Highland.
from four to six-thirty, thirty-three ninety-five Highland. Uh, they ask for no scary costumes, like wear your favorite team jersey, and you can register at harvestforlostsoles.com. And I think that's it.
City manager?
Council, uh, Mayor Muton asked that I make a report to you related to Battleship Texas. Um, not to have a discussion today, just to simply make a report, to maybe explain to the public how did we get to this point? The decision whether to move forward and try to, um, secure the Battleship Texas in Beaumont is purely a city council decision. Staff, uh, including myself, the administration have not gotten involved in this, or we should not, one way or another. Our job is to provide you the information that you request. And she asked that I kind of clarify, where do we stand today? And I haven't spoken with one city council member that's opposed just offhand to the Battleship Texas moving to Beaumont possibly. What I've heard from various council members, I'm going to explain now, some of the concerns, not that any of you are against it, but the concerns are, what is the potential or possible cost to dock the ship back here alongside or in front of Riverfront Park? So there's a, there's a company called Lanier, it's a reputable engineering firm that does a lot of work for the port of Beaumont. But they've also, were hired by the city of Beaumont a number of years ago to engineer and they're representing our interest on the stabilization project, stabilization of Riverfront Park behind this building, the Civic Center, as you know, going on down. So the council asked us to reach out to Lanier, what is the, what is a preliminary number? It's a preliminary number to dock this size ship. I think the ship's a hundred and ten years old, so their minimum, minimum cost to dock the ship was five-point-two million dollars. But they made it clear, it could be five-point-two to eight or ten or more, I mean, you don't know, right? So that was the number one concern, because local taxpayers would have to pay for that. Second, to get a good number on what it would cost to berth the ship, what you would have to do is hire a group like Lanier to engineer it, okay? That cost, and this is a projected cost, that cost would be somewhere probably between four hundred to eight-hundred thousand dollars. We might ask, well, why such a spread? When we negotiate to hire an engineering firm, it's based on two things, it's based on the projected cost of the project, and it's based on the degree of difficulty of the project. So that's why the percentages can be, you know, spread out, and again, you negotiate with them what they're willing to, what we're willing to pay and what they're willing to for a certain job. So that, that's, those are the two main concerns that I've heard from you as council members, because you're talking about taxpayers' money. Then you start talking about, well, they, the Battleship Texas would require a, they want a gift shop, parking lot, maybe a museum, don't know, who's going to pay for that? Is it local taxpayers, or is Battleship Texas going to pay for that? I think we heard taxpayers would pay for that. You know, so we don't know any definitive answers on what size are we talking about, what size gift shop? You know, where's it going to be located, is it new construction, there's just a lot of unanswered questions. And then council members have brought up to me about, okay, the state of Texas is going to provide thirty-five million dollars supposedly to refurbish the ship from the water down, right? I think that's what y'all heard. Well, what about from the water level up? That's what our citizens are going to look at every day. So that was a concern to you, so what's the ship going to look like if it were to be moved here? Back up a little bit, let's say you spent four to eight-hundred thousand dollars to engineer the project. Then the Corps of Engineers and other entities, but mostly the Corps of Engineers, they have to sign off on it, they have to approve it. How long have we been waiting on them for the Riverfront Park bank stabilization? So you might go spend a lot of money not budgeted for, to go engineer a project that then they're going to have to sign off on. Another concern y'all have had. So, lastly, some council members have worked to try to develop the riverfront for thirty-plus years. So if you have a ship back there that may not look so good, may, I said, may not look so good from the water level up, it's three hundred yards long. Your view of the riverfront down here is gone, you don't have one. You're looking at the side of a ship that is seven to ten stories tall. So those are perspectives that y'all have brought up to me, and Mayor Muton is fully aware of y'all's concerns, but she wanted me to just explain that no one over on y'all's side is, hey, I'm against this project, doesn't make any sense at all, that's not it. It's just there's a lot to think through and a lot of money involved, and who's going to pay for it? And then she asked, which we're going to do, she asked if we'd basically put that in writing, and so Bart and Hallie and I will work on that and then try to push that out on so- social media and explain at least where a majority of the council's coming from.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, thank you. Well, I would like to say that, um, I did make a request to the city manager to get that information out, because by no means do we want anyone to think that the Battleship Texas is not being considered by the council. Uh, it's just a lot of information, uh, a lot of financial responsibility on the taxpayers, and the information needs, uh, to be transparent. So we're going to make sure that that information is posted, so that all citizens can view the information, and hopefully we can come to a final conclusion uh, for the Battleship Texas in the near, near future. I would like to say that, um, on this weekend, I had the opportunity to do a drive-by birthday party for a lady that I grew up in my neighborhood. Uh, going to the store for her as a kid. Uh, Ms. Lila turned one hundred years old, uh, had a beautiful, um, community drive-by with about seventy-five people at least. And I don't think the citizens here really realize how many Centurions that we have here in Beaumont. And, um, we have more, um, people that are a hundred years old or older uh, than I think the city really realized. And before the year is out, somehow I would like to invite them to council, because they are pretty lively and pretty mobile, more than you would probably expect. Um, but, um, it's, it would just be great for people to see and for people to know. Uh, in addition to that, I want to thank staff for all of your hard work, uh, we have a great staff, they work really, really hard. And by no means today do we want to discredit any work that, uh, they do or have done, especially for the buses. Uh, the buses are going to be a great asset to the city, especially new buses, we've had the buses uh, that are running right now for some time. And so if we're going to get them new, we want to make sure that everyone notices that they're new, and we want them to be bright and vibrant uh, running through our city, because that is the transportation for, um, the only transportation that some citizens have. And so, um, if we're going to go out and we're going to do it, we want it to be great for the citizens. In addition to that, uh, this Saturday, um, or this Sunday, just making sure that everyone is truly careful, uh, with the children being out, if children are out, make sure it's adult supervision. Uh, please make sure that you have something reflective while walking and out on the streets, uh, because there's a lot going on uh, with the, uh, Beaumont Police Department, Rogers Park, Pearlstein, Pruitt Center, the Garden Center, Harvest for All Souls, so there is no shortage of Halloween activities, um, going on, just ask that everyone please be safe, uh, making sure that you're watching the children and that they're in a safe environment. Also, there is a five-K run, uh, this Saturday, and, um, hopefully everyone will come out and participate. So with that being said, we're going to, uh, recess to executive session, thank you for coming.